I'm calling in order and everybody please rise on the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, all members of the council are present. So we go into four approval agenda and I have a few things to add. Under 10, the consent agenda, we're going to have 7.4, which is the budget meeting minutes. And then under 15, we're going to have 15B, which is going to be media contact. I think those are the only two things that we need to add. So with that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve that agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Ralph, seconded by Josh, to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried. Okay, then we're going to have Yenny Gutierrez. Did I come close?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we're going to open up the public area for the small cities development program. And Yenny, we'll have you speak, okay? Please.
Hello, here.
Yes, please.
Well, hi. I'm here on behalf of the community action. The person to be here would have been my supervisor, but he's got some busy work that got him tied up. So anyways, I work with the housing department. And I'm here just to give like a brief overview of the small cities development grant that was awarded to City of Fairfax last year, just to see how it's going. As you may or may not know, the grant that was awarded was for $618,700 to the City of Fairfax for rehabilitation of homeowner occupied units, that's for 20 units, and then for eight units of commercial buildings that were being added. We do have all the slots filled for the commercial units. So those are currently in progress. Actually, we have one one slot already completed. We have three that are work in progress and then four that are out for bids. So we're waiting for bids from contractors for those. For the homeowner, that's going kind of a little slow. We do have eight completed and approved applications. Okay, so those are, we do have to fill the 20 slot limit at least because if we have extra funds, we can do more. So depending on, but we do need a minimum of 20 units for the homeowner. So we do encourage any kind of advertising or getting a word out there that we do need applicants for this program. And basically, the terms for the grant for the homeowner is what we wrote. It's an 80/20 split. What that means is 30% is covered by grant funds, 20% is covered by owner as well funds. This is a 10-year loan term, which is forgives 10% per year. After 10 years, it completely forgives. And that's to the city. And the average grant amounts for the homeowner are $18,500. Okay? So that's an average. It can vary a little. Like I said, if projects come in under average, we may be able to do more if there's leftover funds. We, United Community Action, we've been working with this kind of project since the early 1990s. So this is not really new to us. We've had some history, especially my supervisor, he's been with the agency for over 26 years. So, and then Specter, that's on hand, hands on at the projects. Okay? We do, this project just kicked off last fall. So we do have one year into it. We do have two and a half years to complete it. Like to complete them in two if we can at all. So we have the next year again to finish it up. Okay? Yeah, but like I said, we did want to stress that it is very important that we get more applications because it does take some time by the time we approve them and then that Specter gets out there and does this thing, and then contractors. So all of our projects, we do send all of them to the Chippewa Society for individual review, every individual project, just so that they review them. I think that's about it. Is there any questions that anybody may have, clarification?
None, nothing. Thank you, Yenny.
Okay.
For coming.
Yeah, well, thank you for your time.
And then I'll need a motion to close the hearing. Have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Jenny, seconded by Josh, to close the hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, then moving on to open up the hearing for the Craig and Rob zoning application. Craig, would you like to take the stand, please?
You're right, too.
You can go over there, right over there.
Do you want me to explain what I want to do or?
Yeah, just briefly.
Basically, I want to build a decaf garage. Basically, it's going to be used to store all my stuff. Now I have a boat where I store another place all over the winter. And then I have a lot more golf cart. I have four vehicles, a lot of stuff, and I have all these storage units. So just like that, everything on my house. And I'd like to build a little bigger than the 1,000 square foot allowed. So I want to build a 28 by 50 garage. And it wouldn't affect any of my neighbors because my lot is 200 feet wide, 150 feet deep. I kind of sketched it out on that diagram. So I have, if you can move my house, I have plenty of room for garage. So I don't know, that's pretty much it.
Okay.
And the siding and everything is going to look the exact same as my house. I'm going to match my house. They're going to finally be the same, same shingles. The sidewalks are going to be like 10 feet. So standard garage. So that's kind of what I want to do.
It's going to look like a garage?
It's going to be a garage, yeah. It's going to match my house, the siding. It's not going to be a machine shutter, not like that. It's going to be a frame garage.
Okay. Questions, anyone?
The zoning setbacks, everything else is correct though, 40 feet or whatever he's got shown, is that?
Yeah, I measured, I went down and measured. I don't have it staked out or nothing because I didn't do that until I get this approved. But I'm kind of roughly measuring that's about what it'd be from what I could tell. I don't have the exact line, but I know I found the property line stake. And I measured from that, it was about 40 feet.
I guess what I'm asking is, other than the size, everything else that fits in the current zoning, right the way he has it drawn? So it's just the size is the only issue we're after?
That's correct.
Yeah, I think about 1,000 feet was the max allowed, which isn't a huge garage. Yeah.
Okay. Any question, anyone? Okay, then I guess we need a motion to approve the variance.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Rick, seconded by Josh, to approve the variance for Craig's garage. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, and then we will close the hearing. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Rick, seconded by Ralph, to close the hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, moving on to number seven, which is the bid openings and quotes for the demolition of down on First Street here. Hoffman is $16,140 and Fiddy Pogus is $36,000.
But it's $24,000 to tear it down, $12,000 to tear it down after they burn it.
Right.
It's 24.
I wonder what happens. I'm sorry.
Right.
There's a still more.
So the question is whether we want to burn it down or not, right?
We're not going to burn it.
Not going to burn it, yeah.
I think that was because it's kind of been a thing that it's too dangerous?
Yeah. The school kind of told us not to. It's kind of an issue where they just said, you're better off tearing it down and being done with it, with all the regalies and everything else that goes on.
Okay, so. Any comments? No? Nope? Okay, so I have a motion to, since we're going to burn, we'll go with the, we're not burning, sorry, so we're not burning, we'll go with the Hoffman Construction then. So do I have a motion for that?
Make a motion to go with Hoffman Construction.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion paid by Josh, seconded by Rick, to go with Hoffman Construction for $16,140. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Moving on to the Second Street sidewalk bids for at the park. One is from Wilson Frank for $7,685. The other one is from Pickle Cay Masonry for $8,880. Any questions, any comments?
I'll make a motion to go ahead with Wilson Frank.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion gave by Josh, seconded by Rick, to go with Wilson Frank for $7,685. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Then Kami, you're up. Kami Martins from GFW is going to give a little presentation on the GFW referendum. Am I clicking? Use your computer. Okay, all right, here we go.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, for allowing me to come and speak to you today and audience. It's so nice to see a full audience. This is my third city council meeting to present. I think this is the fullest audience I've presented to here, so very nice. As you may know, we have a building bond project coming up. Wow. This fall. So on November 7th, we have a bond project that is coming forward. It's a two option question for the voters that will be coming, all those that are within the GFW boundaries. Option one is a 37, you know, almost a 38 million. Option two is contingent upon option one passing, which is the 1.572 million piece. And then LTFM is long-term facilities maintenance, which is school funds that we get for about 2 million because we are trying to offset the costs. A board, like the city council, has been meeting to try to figure out how to get that number down because of the tax impact. I just quickly like to tell you because I think some have had the idea of all of a sudden we just decided to come up with an over $40 million project. And it's been in the works for quite some time. When I came in 2013, we established a facilities committee and we did a first walkthrough assessment and then tried to prioritize things and realizing we had quite a few large issues that needed to be addressed, we did our best to establish a group within the school to start looking at what our needs were. In 2014 and 15, we were trying to establish our schedule and then the legislature met that year, 2015. So in the summer of 2015, they developed something called long-term facilities maintenance. Prior funding for rural schools did not get the same amount of money that was given to metro schools. They were given a higher amount to maintain their older buildings. So this came about, but to get the money, of course, no one in government just gives you the money because you, you know, are looking deserving. So you had to fill out a plan. So we had to have a long-term facilities plan for 10 years. And of course, we were vastly short even in our estimation of what our different costs of things were. And they wouldn't approve our long-term facilities plan unless we told them how we were going to come up with a million dollars, that we were short of our new funding. So in doing that, we looked at a variety of things, had some community meetings, knew the governor's tax bill was having that ache to school tax credit, which would help out for anybody with ag land and living in ag land. We wanted to wait to see that that would pass. Then he didn't sign the tax bill in the summer of 2016, but he did this year. So we're very happy because we moved forward last January, developed our committee and set about doing that. Really, we looked at three scenarios, just taking care of our crucial needs to make sure our buildings were operable, was 16.2 million. Then we had a medium range look at things for our primary needs and some of our secondary needs because the last thing we wanted to do was come back to taxpayers and then in eight years, come back to you again and say, okay, we took her at first round, now there's round two. And then while we were talking, they were saying, seriously? So in eight years, we've got to come back. And then how long will that last? So we started talking, that's about 20 years. So we're going back to the taxpayers in 20 years. And that's why the committee really said, let's really find a long-term solution so we don't keep coming back to our taxpayers. And that got us to the position that we are now of where we're coming to the taxpayers for what we're trying to do. Here's kind of the committee meeting and it was last April when we finally had a final plan that we brought to the board. It was not till June until they approved it. They did some tweaking on it to try and reduce it. We had three areas that we really concentrated. So it wasn't just the facility, it was what do our facilities mean to our communities? What do our facilities need to do to move forward to providing quality education for those in GFW now and in the future? And then, of course, the physical priorities of the building. So that was the committee's first objective to do. You can see we have a rather large list of primary needs at the elementary and then some secondary needs. What would happen in the elementary and given, we would change that to a pre-K 2. I'm so excited to tell you, we started our T-Bird Clubs for our school age care. We've heard about the daycare shortage. And I think when I was at the Winthrop City Hall, I had to tell them I had three. As of today, we have 18. So I know. Yeah, we have them coming in from all over the place scrambling to get enough workers to cover. So we are so excited that that is up and rolling. We've had such a wonderful response. So we want to expand the capability of doing that. We are full, full capacity at the elementary. So we're shoving everybody into every nuke and cranny we can to make it work right now. This plan would allow us to move our preschool classes that are currently right now beyond, in the four-year area, not beyond the locked doors, beyond the locked doors. Our library that floods every time we have a large rain, we'll take care of that issue and move the library so we aren't taking the books out and putting the books in. And then really making this a primary focus building with a pre-K 2. Middle school, we had quite a few, even though there is someone on your board who will say this is the most beautiful building of our three and he has some right to claim that. So I, he can't play that role right now, so I'll step in for him. It truly is, it's beautiful when you walk in to do that. But it has some significant needs with all of the water infiltration and we've got pipes. I tried to bring one, but we have a lot of our pipes in our ceiling and they corroded down, so a pipe like this, and we've got this much water flow. So we're, it's not good. So there's some bigger items that need to be done. We would change the middle school to the third through sixth grade floor plan. You can see we would move things around. In the white area is currently what that community space that we've been working with to make it maker's space, to do some different things. So we would still work basically with the City of Fairfax to help us repurpose that area for what would be community, good community use space and get separate entrances gained for that. We would redo the auditorium. We would repurpose all the seats and the lighting and everything else to make that auditorium again a fully functioning so you're not worried about which seat that you sit in, so you don't end up with black and blue marks from being pinched by broken seats. So we're going to repurpose everything we can. We hope we can start to have our community productions and those kind of things over here in Fairfax and utilize that space more completely. The high school is the big one. It's just the setup for it, safety, the other, I'm going to go back. One thing I'm excited about for the middle school is we're revamping the entrance so that we can pave in the south side where buses will drop off and pick up and parent pick up on the other. So we aren't having buses and kids. So we would redo all of that for greater safety. The high school, this is the old configuration. This is what the new configuration would be. And again, we would put bus parking on the north side by the park. The south side, we would have for the first time ever parking for the high school. We are keeping the wing on the east and the gym that we have now. And then, as you can see, redoing everything else, ag, industrial tech and all that will move to the north side of the building so we can have good, proper ventilation going out that way for those things, a great community space in the middle and a gym that will fit our size so that we can have all of 712. We would be moving 712 over. Licenses for high school students are 712. So now our high school students, our seventh and eighth graders can get languages, eggs, industrial tech. So we're excited about giving them those opportunities sooner. Foods courses, all of that, we can start offering to our seventh graders. Again, just pictures of the floor plan and then the upper floor plan would keep seventh and eighth grade in that upper on that, that original wing, upgrading our, everything that has to go with all of the technical side of things too. So you can see right now, GFW, our bond, our current bond is at $143. Now, this is on a $75,000 market value home. Option one would add another $68 and option two to square it off for that optional third gym would be an additional $4. So you can see that would, that would put us in about 215. So right between Buffalo Lake, Hector and Cedar Mountain is where that tax impact would lie. The time schedule, you can see, we're not looking at if everything goes through to be fully completed by 2020, we would do it in stages so that we could continue to keep students in. So keep a wing in, demolish a wing, move them into another one. So our high school teachers would be doing lots of movement over the next few years, but we think that's, that's just doable. Absentee balloting actually begins September 22nd. We're partnering with Sibley County on this. They did for our special election the last time. So you can get absentee ballots from Sibley County and submit those September 22nd. Saturday, November 4th, they are open all day on that Saturday. And then from noon to 8, we will have voting open at all three of our, all three of our buildings from noon to 8 on that day. So I'm just here to give information so everybody has an informed vote. We hope everybody gets out and votes. We are excited for the tax credit, so the 40% tax credit. Thursday night, the 14th, at the Fairfax Auditorium Gym. If you've got questions, our financial people will be there, our building construction, our architect will be there, I will be there, board members will be there. We're going to go through things a little bit again and then actually have a tour of the middle school. And then specific questions on your tax impact for your property. Everything to do with that will happen 7 o'clock Thursday at the auditorium here in Fairfax. So I hope you come so that you can get specific questions answered. I do have some handouts on the website is how to get your tax impact if you know. I have some, we're trying to do some frequently asked questions. And we have those posted, so as I get questions, I keep trying my best to answer them. So we do get the right information out for individuals. So you can see how was the task force chosen? Why were there so many school employees on the task force? Why are we having such a large project? Why are we restructuring the services at each site? Why is the high school staying in Winthrop? Why are we not partnering with the LHS? Why are we purchasing homes at the high school? We have room at Fairfax. If everything is going to Winthrop, why should I vote for this plan if I don't live in Winthrop? Why are we building a brick and mortar if students can stay home and do technology online? Why didn't the districts give the voters more than one choice? What happens if the tax credit is no longer funded by the state? If our agriculture is getting a tax credit, then who's picking up that portion? How did we get to this point? How do I find out how much I'm going to have to pay on my property? What is wrong with our new buildings now? And when did we start this process and what is the timeline for the construction? So those are all questions I've answered, but I'd love to take any new ones and continue to add. Does anybody have any questions about the project?
Anyone on the council that questions? Anyone in the audience? Well, thank you very much. Must have been the dazzling lights that just got there, please.
Thank you, Kami.
Thank you. And I'll stay, I do have some other color copies if anybody would like those.
Appreciate it, right?
Thank you. Then we'll move on to number 10, which is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions in regard to that? No one has questions? I need a motion to accept it.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
And I need a second. Motion's made by Ralph, seconded by Jenny, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Number 11, Jeffrey Telly from the Dollar General Store was coming from Florida to speak with us and to see his facility, his building that's going up. And I got an email from him today that, he said his flight was canceled. His, he has a home on Key West and that was demolished. So he said, and he's to say he wasn't coming out, but he was going to come to Fairfax later. And he also said that, you know, he's going to continue with the project here. But he said a lot of, lot and lots and lots of reconstruction. And we've all been watching him, so. Okay, with that, we're going to go on to Chris. You're next on the list here.
That sees out, just kind of before I get started as an FYI, I lived in Florida for three years. And we had three hurricanes go over our house over three years that I lived there. So I miss Florida. Florida's a miserable, miserable, miserable place and you have no power because it's still summer there. It's hot in Phoenix, so. Good afternoon, evening. I'm Chris Colwell. I'm the chief operating officer of CMMPA, Central Minnesota Municipal Power Agency, who is the joint action agency, which you guys are a member of, for wholesale power procurement for your city. I'm here to talk about a long-term power supply plan that we've been working on for a long time, kind of where we're at, what the recommendations are, kind of specifically what we're recommending at this point for you. We're going out and we're making these presentations to all the members and maybe have non-members that are participating in this. The original power supply plan started about three years ago. It was our agency, Cedar Falls, Iowa, and an agency in Wisconsin were all part of it. So there were three agencies we were doing planning for. Some of you I recognize, I was here about two years ago, talking about kind of where we were at that point in time. At that point in time, we had three primary recommendations. One was called fixed price energy block. One was a combined cycle. And one was wind. And we gave the rationale, the reasons for that. And what's happened since is that one of the partners, UMEG in Wisconsin, was making some long-term decisions on whether or not they were going to participate fully with us or partially with us because of their situation with their host utility, just like where we were at 20 years ago with NSP. The other thing that's happened though, frankly, is that the price of energy keeps coming down and coming down and coming down and coming down. Because this plan was a plan for roughly 2020 to 2040, there was no real driving need to actually have to transact because we were looking at long-term planning. Prices kept coming down, so we've been just frankly waiting. We're to the point now though where we believe that now's the time to transact. We don't think the market will go much lower, but because of the changes in the markets, it's changed some of the recommendations in terms of what, what we're recommending, some of the volumes and those type of things around that. And I should have given my standard disclosure upfront. I spent my entire career in this business, so if I'm using terms or acronyms or things that you guys don't understand, please. that you guys don't understand, please, please, please feel free to stop and ask because, as I said, I've been in the business my entire career, and I know that like any industry, we tend to use a lot of acronyms that can be confusing. So if I'm not making any sense, please stop me and let me know. So we've made a shift towards, and I've talked about the market already and kind of why it's changed, but what that's done is if you go to page four, because the price of energy has come down, the price of purchasing a piece of a combined cycle of an actual generator has not changed. And the reason it hasn't changed is that this generator still has the same amount of iron in the ground, and they spent the same amount of money to build it, so if they're going to sell a piece of that long-term, they're going to expect to recover at least their costs plus a little bit of profit typically. While the energy prices are coming down, prices of combined cycles haven't. So therefore, we've shifted away from the combined cycle to more of a fixed energy purchase. Along with that though, because part of the reason we were recommending wind originally was as a gas hedge. Wind acts as a natural gas hedge in the electricity market. And the reason it does that is because the price of electricity is almost 100% now driven by the price of natural gas. Price of gas goes up, price of electricity goes up with it. Price of gas go down, price of electricity goes down with it. So if you buy wind, you're buying energy at a fixed price, so if the price of gas goes up, the price of energy goes up and the value of that wind purchase goes up with it. If the price doesn't go up, then you're buying the wind and you didn't need to, but that's okay. It's as a hedge, and the way I think of a hedge, or my analogy of a hedge is, think of it as buying insurance. Nobody pays their homeowner's insurance for 20 years, and at the end of 20 years complains that my house didn't burn down, so therefore I didn't get the payout on it. If we don't need it long-term, that's a good thing. We buy the hedge just in case. And so what we're recommending is essentially now fixed price, energy purchase, and wind, and the combined cycle, which you guys had a piece of, part of our original recommendation to you, was a little piece of combined cycle, that's essentially going away at least for now. We can revisit it later, we continually are redoing plans, we're continually looking at the market, but because of the way the prices have changed, the recommendations have changed a little bit. If you go to page five, what this shows is that essentially, and I'll get into why here in a second, but we don't think Fairfax needs to be buying anything right now in terms of the fixed price energy. You have enough energy with your current resources, which are your purchase of NC2 and your allocation of power from the Western Area Power Administration, or WAPA. So most of your energy is being fulfilled now by your current contracts that run long-term. And because you have enough energy to meet most of the obligations you're trying to meet with the fixed price, we don't think you need to do that. Now, the gas, because it does offer a hedge against some of the stuff that you aren't fixing right now, we are going to recommend a small piece of gas, but that's going to be in a second step, and I'll get to that in a second as well. So if you go to page six, this is what I was talking about. What this is meant to show is kind of what your low shape would look like on a typical summer day, this happens to be 2025, or typical day, I guess January 2025 is what was selected here, and how your energy obligations are being met. So I mentioned the Nebraska City 2 purchase, I mentioned the WAPA allocation. Well, that's most of your energy. You do have some energy on the shoulders and some energy on the peak, so the top, top load hours of the day, but you're still going to be buying from the market, but that's okay, because you're only buying about, less than 10% of your energy is coming from something that isn't a fixed or hedged component. So long-term, you're in good shape. Typically, we recommend between 75 and 80% of your long-term energy needs are fixed or hedged. You guys are well within that with your current resource. Page seven is kind of the same thing, it shows, this is over time though, going up to 2044, and it's the same thing, it's, you're buying short-term purchases from the market, you're using your existing wind plus the recommendation we're going to be coming back with later as your long-term hedge. Overall, you guys are in great shape for long-term stable energy rates, which is the goal for the whole process. The plan and kind of what we're going forward, everything we have today is preliminary, we're still talking to the counterparties about final prices on the fixed price. What we're choosing to do is we're going to move forward in two steps. We're going through the approval process to get the approvals on the fixed price purchase first, and we'd like to have that done by November. So I'm out talking to councils and commissions where we are recommending they take some of this fixed price purchase. Now, we're going to be going back in October looking for final approvals. Once that's done, then we're going to be doing the final recommendations on the volume of wind that we take. The reason we're doing it in a two-step process is because I mentioned that gas, we're doing that as a, I'm sorry, wind is a function of, is a hedge against gas. The more energy you fix with the fixed price purchase, the less wind you need to take. So the final volume on the wind recommendation is going to depend upon the final volume for those that are going to be taking a part, a piece of the fixed price purchase, the final volume of the wind recommendation is going to be directly affected by that. Because of that, we're taking this as a two-step process. For you guys, what'll happen is that we probably will be back in October, I'm sorry, November, December, starting to talk about the final approvals for the wind recommendation, with at least one or two months to follow up, coming back after that for the final approvals. But I won't need to come back to you guys until we start doing the road shows, so to speak, for the wind, and that'll probably, like I said, November or December, depending upon how this works out. But I want to get in front of all of our councils and commissions, even the one, there's another city, Granite Falls, we're not recommending they take any either, they've got hydro, they're similar situated as you, but we want to get out in front of all the councils and commissions to, A, give them an update on what we've been doing, and B, give them a heads-up as to what's coming, so that if there are any questions, if there are any issues, let us know. Our job is to make sure you guys are comfortable with the recommendation, because in the end, final decisions are yours. They're not ours, they're yours. And our job is to make every single one of our members and their councils and commissions comfortable with what we're doing. Again, this is preliminary, we are not recommending any take at this point on the fixed price piece for you, but we will be coming looking for, or recommending a small piece of wind down the road. The final recommendation on the wind is dependent upon that fixed price block and some final tweaking of the model. As we run models, we're essentially look like hourly loads between now and 2040 essentially. So we have to continue a little iterative process on the modeling as we try to hone down, hone down, hone down our recommendations. So that's all I have. Any questions? Next time we'll have Kyle come, my planner, he's an economist, he can give you all kinds of charts and graphs.
No questions?
No. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, then we're going to move to, we're going to change it just a little bit here, we moved to the New Ulm Public Utilities number 16, since we have Dustin here. Okay? So you want to take your chance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm Mr. City Council, again, I'm Dustin Cross with the City of New Ulm, and I'm working with the city in terms of the natural gas pipeline and a dispute that has arisen between Heartland Corn Products and the City of New Ulm that we are caught somewhat in the middle of. To kind of update the council on that status, we had a meeting with the city administrator and myself for Fairfax, with Pat Rossi, who's the New Ulm Public Utilities Commissioner, and Roger Hipper, the city attorney on one hand, and then Representative Heartland and their attorney from Minneapolis on the other. It was about a two, two and a half hour meeting, I thought a fairly productive meeting. During the course of that discussion, Heartland made what I thought was a very reasonable at least starting point for a discussion, and both Mr. Rossi and Mr. Hipper indicated that they would take that back to the New Ulm Public Utilities Commission, present it and get feedback and direction from them as to how they would proceed. We really didn't hear anything for somewhat surprising amount of time, it took well over a month, I think. And the next communication we got was that Mr. Rossi and Mr. Hipper wanted to meet with myself and Mr. Golez to kind of let them know what the status is. The status was that they had decided they would not make a counter-proposal to Heartland. Instead, they were intending to proceed with some form of litigation, they had not yet made up their mind as to the form of that litigation. And then the issue, just to kind of remind everyone, is this what they call laugh gas or positive accounting for gas. And this matter, this laugh gas had been handled since the inception of our agreements in one way, in effect, and after a significant balancing error was discovered by Hutchinson and negotiated resolved, New Ulm wants to now shift, if you will, the accounting for that to the, to accounting for this laugh gas. Again, I don't necessarily know that I agree or disagree, but I think I disagree with that change after 12 years of performance. But in any event, it is something that we are primarily, although not entirely, a bystander of. We are not significant, you know, significant component of that volume that's getting transported is of course Heartland, a ton of a price of 90% of usage. So there is a component of risk or exposure that we have that is adverse or would cost us more should the PUC, the New Ulms position be adopted. In any event, somewhat, I don't know, offhandedly, but both Mr. Golez and I both made the comments, couldn't there be a way to resolve this matter, this dispute without involving the City of Fairfax? And I think that, frankly, I think that there may be, but I haven't been too successful in convincing Mr. Hipper of that, but we did make that comment, and apparently that has precipitated Mr. Rossi writing a letter that was kind of, I guess, taking outside the box, I'm not sure, but it was certainly unsolicited, to the effect that would the City of Fairfax be interested in selling its portion of the line that runs to Heartland Corn Products to the City of New Ulm? And they put together a proposal dated August 28th, that sued the city council, let's have a look at it. I was asked the question, provided an opinion regarding the legality of doing this, specifically focused on our contractual relationship. I do not believe that the contract legally prohibits assignment, if you will, of that contract, should the council ultimately be interested in negotiating a council made up a proposed sale, with strictly legal standpoint. By no means am I advocating that that be done, certainly making legal opinion that it could be done should this council decide to pursue it. The only other comment I would make, because obviously that's a policy decision for this council to make, it's not a legal decision, the only other comment I would make is that Mr. Rossi's proposal only accounts for the present value of the bare minimum payments that we're guaranteed to get for the remaining life of the contract with Heartland. Doesn't, he acknowledges and even analyzes the value on an average basis, but he does not acknowledge, he does not place any value on the residual value of that pipeline going out into the future, which of course does have a slip. Those could be points, of course, for negotiation, but we did reach an agreement with Heartland back in 2004, and have had, I believe, by all counts, a very good relationship with them, and it's been a very mutually beneficial relationship. So I don't know if a sale is something that this council is in any way interested in. I'm not advocating neither for or against it, because I think that is pretty much just a policy choice. But I would say this, I do not know that even if the council were interested in doing such a negotiation, that that would force all litigation. We're kind of caught in the middle, and we were caught in the middle, if you recall, because at the time, the city of New Ulm did not allow provision of utility services outside of San Diego, that's no longer the case. So they could theoretically do this if they wanted, but again, it was something that was not solicited by either Mr. Golez or myself. It was, I think, the City of New Ulm, trying to think a little bit outside the box to try to say, okay, if you won't want to end this litigation or potential litigation that's coming, this is what we could do for you. The only other final comment I'll make is that we do have, and have notified, of course, the Minnesota cities about this potential claim, they have not yet made a final decision on whether or not this is covered by your, in fact, policy with them, and can't make that decision until they see what form and what kinds of claims the city is going to be bringing. So they, that is, of course, we believe that they would be covered and certainly will be notifying them if and when this moves past that stage. So that's kind of my report of where things stand, I think this has captured.
Questions for him?
The contract doesn't address accounting gas at all, does it?
No. Well, depends on who you ask. I believe the answer to that is no. And I believe that the practical construction of the contract, in other words, you and I have a written agreement, and we do, and we perform on that agreement for 10 years one way, it's kind of hard for you to come and say, well, that's not what the contract really says. Okay? Now, Mr. Hipper would say, well, that's a waiver, that I'm waiting my legal right, it's not a practical construction, we just didn't, we chose not to enforce it for that period of time, but now we've decided we're going to. One of the things that's challenged for me is when I asked Mr. Rossi, why is this number leaked so much? I mean, why haven't you not pursued this in the past? And his answer has always been, it was never a big enough number, it was always a fairly modest number, and it's grown now dramatically. And I've asked him, why has it grown? Well, we're not sure. And it seems to me that if it grows and it changes, you've got two, one or two things going on. Either you got a leak, or you've got meter issues. And there is some acknowledged inefficiencies, and there's different meters. So one of the things we've asked him to look at is if we've got a different meter from our tap, and there's a different manufacturer of a different meter at the other tap, that seems to me you're asking for trouble. Again, I don't know how far the City of New Ulm, they're contractually obligated to look for and identify causes of meter discrepancies, so that's just an aside. To me, it seems like there's not been enough investigation to identify the mechanical, potential mechanical uses of why this is happening, because we can shrink, right now the number jumped, and it's at $131,000 today, is what they say they are being underpaid. We are paying the undisputed portion of our invoices, of course, that's what Heartland's paying us, and then they're writing us letters that say, we're not leaving our rights under the contract dispute, there's a need now. It's growing, and we've pushed very hard for both parties to negotiate, but it hasn't seemed to work.
Okay. No questions? Do you foresee that it'll move on a little faster now? I mean, is there anything that's going to, I just hate to see, this number's at 131,000. That's huge.
Yes, it is. Now, the vast majority of that's a claim against Heartland, but it's not entirely a claim against Heartland. There's probably about 10,000, roughly, if I'm doing my math right, that would be an increase for us. So it's not insignificant, and it certainly is a claim that will always be there if they're right. I mean, it will be there, it'll vary dramatically, but it will always be there for the remaining seven years of the company.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then moving on, we're going back to our number 13 preliminary budget for 2018.
Can I just say something? Are you going to act on that at all? Take no action, or tell them that you're not interested in selling?
Oh, okay. Okay, so you want to go over that?
I think she's talking about the gas, the pipeline. So I can answer New Ulm with a response that the city council does not intend on selling the line or at this time?
I don't think that we're just, I don't think we're interested in selling it, and I don't think that we, I mean, this is the first letter we've gotten, and why would we act on anything that rapidly? And I don't know how the rest of you feel.
I'm not prepared to make a decision.
I don't think that we, I mean, this is the first letter we've gotten, and why would we act on anything that rapidly? And I don't know how the rest of you feel.
I'm not prepared to make a decision like that.
No, and so I think you can, you can.
Do you want negotiations for selling the line, or you don't want to sell the line?
I don't think at this point you want to sell the line.
I don't.
Because I should, in order for things to move forward, we need to respond to that letter. Either we're not interested, or we are, so that they can start their litigation, or whatever.
I would make a motion that we're not interested in selling the line.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion by Jenny, and a second by Josh, that we're not interested in selling the line, all fingers aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, that takes care of that. Then let's move on to the 2018 preliminary budget. In there, you have that, some of the changes that we're doing in front of us here. These that we added and include after we had our meeting. But we don't have in there that we, the Fairfax Fire Rescue had asked for a $4,900 increase in salary. Do you want to explain that at all?
All right. I was looking at our bylaws, which were established in 2009, and some things have changed. Duties have changed since these bylaws were established, which, to my knowledge, is the last time that any wage per se was established for the officers, the elected officers of the fire rescue. At that time, we had a part-time ALS paramedic supervisor who oversaw both the BLS side and ALS side. We no longer have that position. And it's been since 2009, like I said, duties have shifted. So, what we're, we had voted on actually back in last October, was to increase some of the salaries of the officers, or of the elected officers due to the change in duties. So, do you want those numbers? Or do you have them?
I have them right here.
You have them? Okay. So, you know, just looking like the fire chief, the biggest one is the ambulance captain. Like I said, this is an elected position, and these changes will be in fact, next year, we vote in December, so it wouldn't necessarily be me that would get this, you know? But the ambulance captain and the ambulance officers, their duties are the ones that have pretty much changed the most with the, with not having a paramedic supervisor who was also paid a salary. Those duties of that individual have then been shifted to these officers now. And that, you know, there's quite a bit of duty that goes along with that, you know, keeping everyone licensed, keeping the ambulance license equipment updated, orders supplied, people trained, all those things fall to the ambulance captain, and then in turn to the two officers. So, that was primarily that, and like I said, an increase for the officers who are performing these duties. They help with a lot of the education pieces, supply pieces for, for the ambulance to keep us going and keep us well supplied so we can serve the City of Fairfax. So, that's pretty much it. I do have a list of duties, if you guys, I pulled them right out of the bylaws of what everyone did. I don't know if you guys have access to our old bylaws. You know, it's, it's just basically running, you know, running the ambulance and keeping everything up to date. And, you know, keeping us, we're known, I think, for being pretty, an aggressive service, a good service, when our ALS partners come to us with our patients, they go, well, why am I even here? Because, you know, the people on the ambulance are well-trained, and they perform their duties very well. And, you know, that's, that's them, they're great, and it's also the officers that keep us up to date on, on all of the latest, you know? And the aggressive treatments, we've been very blessed by the city with our equipment requests and grants, too. We've gotten several grants for new equipment. So, you know, we're just lucky to have a good service, and like I said, appreciate the support from the community and the city council. But these, these raises, you know, it's just, you know, to, to reflect the duties and to give a raise. It's been about eight years or something.
I think it's a good time to say thank you for what you do, you guys do a great job.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you much, okay?
Joel.
Well.
You too.
All right. You did a great job, okay? Okay, so with that, does anyone have any questions on the 2018 preliminary budget? We have the full steps here that we're adding in, and the power plant rule.
That's pushed off a year, right?
Yep, that's off for a year in 2019. That was a change, because we had it in there for the last two weeks, yeah. Any other questions? If not, a motion to approve the Ulm budget?
Do you need to make a motion to get this in there?
Oh, that's to include this?
Including, yep.
Okay. That's, that's in the resolution?
You need to make the motion to.
To add that?
To add that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to add those ambulance salaries to the 2018.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion's been made by Jenny and seconded by Josh to, are you approving and adding?
Sure. We'll do a two-for-one.
Yeah.
To approve the 2018 agenda with these two corrections here and the addition of $4,900 for the fire rescue, fire ambulance. All in favor, well, that was, and the second was by Josh.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Okay, then we need to go to the Resolution 2017-12, which is approving the proposed levy to be collected in 2018. And it will, and we have our truth and taxation hearing on December 12th, 2017. Anyone have any questions on that? Let me set it, 500,000. It can always be lowered, but it can't be raised, so that's why we set it like we do. Any questions? If not, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Okay, a motion is made by Rick, seconded by Jenny, to approve Resolution 2017-12. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Moving on to 15, which is the RS fiber franchise agreement. Emptying pages. Any comments or questions on that? Jenny, there's a, anyone? Okay, then we need to approve it.
Can they approve it without a second reading?
Yeah, for this type of one.
This type, you can.
We can approve this one?
We've had this before, this was, we talked about this, we had this, I think, at last meeting.
We talked about it, but we didn't, we didn't.
We had MediaCom at the last meeting.
We had MediaCom, and we were waiting to approve this to see if MediaCom would match any will, so.
Yeah, the only thing that was different on MediaCom was exactly what I said, was that, that revenues were at 3%, and started by, that's the only thing that.
So they agreed to go to five, and we both get five, which is good, it's in there.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the RS fiber franchise agreement.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's made by Jenny, seconded by Ralph, to approve the RS fiber franchise agreement against 415. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Then we're moving on to the MediaCom agreement, 15B. And as you see, Marsha, it came to 5%, so.
Yep, the one that we have now says 3%, but I have an email from the, saying it's only five. She was out of the office today for a funeral, but.
I changed it to five.
Oh, you had that editable.
What?
Good. I didn't realize you had the word version.
Yeah, I did, yeah. I changed it to five. That's all I changed, though, was just the revenue, 5%. I didn't change anything.
Okay, so, any questions in regard to that? Okay, I need a motion to approve the MediaCom agreement.
I'll make a motion.
I'll do a second.
I'll second that.
Motion's made by Rick, seconded by Ralph, to approve the MediaCom agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Okay, we already have Dustin here, so we can move on to mutual aid agreement, which we have done before, but we're just kind of redoing it, right?
Yeah, it's a renewal.
Renewal.
TZD, towards zero debt, right? Okay.
Okay, any other questions on that?
It's run by the county, and they reimburse us for the overtime that our officers put in. How often do you do that? Not, not that often?
It's like very, very much, different wave.
Yeah. But they need this agreement, a mutual aid agreement approved before the Fairfax Police Department can join in.
Okay, so, can I get a motion for that?
So move.
Second?
Aye.
Motion's made by Josh, seconded by Rick, to approve the mutual aid agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Okay, moving on to our snow blowing for 2017-18. Marsha, any comments on that? We see in front here, this is the same.
Same as what Tom Colmer got. $150 an hour, guaranteed 3,000, but season, the season runs from October 15th to April 15th.
Any questions on that? I think I'm happy we found someone that'll do it.
Great.
Okay, so we need a motion now to approve this? I'm sure you.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
The second, okay. Motion by Josh, seconded by Jenny, to approve the snow blowing loading, can you, well, and confirms, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Moving on to Marsha.
The billing permits for August are listed in your packet. The, just a reminder that we have the special meeting on September 19th at 7:00 PM with Keering Wires. And that is actually, unless you have any questions on the financial statements, that's all I have.
Okay. Joel, you're up.
I've just been busy looking for RS fiber, mow lawns.
And then that hoop feed is in for the middle school.
We just got to put some elbows on so we can get that connected in, so then we can feed those guys from two different ways if we do have an issue. And we're getting ready to get the transformer set as soon as it comes for Dollar General.
Caitlin.
I don't have very much to do. Probably sound the budget, we're going to try and push off that cooler I talked about to next year, surprise your fingers that we can make it that long. Otherwise, we just kind of decided if we need to fix it again, we'll get together again and probably get it taken care of. We have too many people training, so we may work. August was pretty good for a normal August, so I'm confident that that will keep up. We've got a lot of new stuff going on, so.
I like it. Jenny, your turn.
So for the month of August, we had about 217 calls. And then we're still waiting to hear for the cops grant for the third officer.
I just have one question. In your, in your meeting here, or your police committee meetings, what are your hours for Saturday? We have Sunday, Monday, Thursday, Friday, so we don't have any hours for Saturday.
It's usually two to two, and it's flexible. But I think we should close on Saturday. What could go wrong on Saturday?
Okay. We have the committee reports in there, please, and record, anybody have any questions for any one of them? Okay, then, we have no correspondence. Are there any council concerns?
I just want to bring up one thing that we're doing at the school. We're putting in a prairie and pollinator hatch out back about three acres. Just kind of wanted to update you guys that that's going on. We're partnering with Veterans Forever and Mary and Mike Mueller's Prairie Restoration Company. They're helping us out, so we're looking for, that'll be, that'll be a good thing. We have some work we need to do on that, so if you know anybody that has a big tiller, wants to do some tilling when that comes. It's about three acres, so if you have your little Troy built, most of the day out there. But yeah, we're, you know, we're going to be moving along with that, so that's really going to be cool.
Anybody, anything else? Okay, and I guess I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Motion by Jenny, seconded by Josh, to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried.
That's pretty good. Take it by yourself.
Yeah.
That was pretty good.